I'm gonna ask Commissioner Harry Foy to lead us in that.
My name is David Wiggins, good to the light, United States of America. And we believe the principle which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Before we get to our consent agenda, we have some special recognition tonight. I would like to acknowledge Commissioner Stuart May for the presentation and reading of the proclamation in honor of Maggie Kearney's 107th birthday. Is she here?
Yes.
Honoring Maggie Cooler Kearney. Maggie Cooler Kearney is yet out of family and friends, celebrating her 107th birthday. Maggie Allen, now effectively known as Aunt Maggie, performed all 4/24, 1988, in a living physical area, Phil Paris. She later married, mobile attorney, 1946, moved to go on family farm in the red, frightening area of John Shannon Road, and going like him now, fifty-seven years to his past, 2013. Aunt Maggie is mother of two children, with three children we regret reaching. That's our North generation's history. Aunt Maggie is not only a mother and grandmother, she is also his aunt and friend, the biggest community. But she shared a woman like her. Aunt Maggie has been active now at Mount Olivet Church for seven and nine years. Recognized 4/24, is vigorous, vigorous of Mount Olivet, continues to inspire church. Aunt Maggie will celebrate her 107th birthday, 4/24. And expect to enjoy a celebration of her own Mount Olivet Church, planned in 4/26. Now that four days ago, it was all quite a candle on the mission, to give out a plan, 4/24, of Aunt Maggie Kearney today. Encourage your citizens to celebrate Aunt Maggie's 107th birthday. Great to hear this question, please ask for help, the vision calling on. This is for you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Maggie.
Okay, um, the next person I would like to acknowledge is Alyssa Fuller from Economic Development for the presentation and reading of the proclamation honoring national manufacturing.
Good evening, everyone. Whereas manufacturing is a vital part of the economy of Franklin County, North Carolina, contributing 203 million in total wages in 2024 to the prosperity and economic growth of the county, and whereas Franklin County, North Carolina is home to a diverse range of 59 manufacturers with over 2,665 jobs, producing goods that are essential to various industries, and whereas manufacturing in North Carolina represents the second largest industry in the state with over 11,000 businesses and employing approximately 460,000 workers, contributing more than $108 billion to the state's gross domestic product. And whereas for every dollar spent in manufacturing, an additional $1.81 is generated for North Carolina's economy, and for every new 100 direct manufacturing jobs, approximately 740 new indirect jobs are created, showcasing the profound impact this sector has on economic development and community well-being. And whereas the manufacturing industry offers rewarding career opportunities for Franklin County, North Carolina residents, from high-tech jobs in advanced manufacturing to critical roles in the production of essential goods, and whereas Franklin County, North Carolina remains committed to supporting the growth of manufacturing through investments in education and workforce development, ensuring our local workforce has the skills needed to thrive in 21st century manufacturing jobs, and whereas National Manufacturing Week, celebrated from October 3rd through October 10th, 2025, provides an opportunity to recognize the hard work and dedication of our local manufacturers and their employees and the significant positive contributions they make to our local economy and community. Now therefore, the Franklin County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim October 3rd through October 10th, 2025, as National Manufacturing Week in Franklin County, North Carolina, and command its observance to all residents urging the community to join in recognizing the importance of the manufacturing sector to our local and state economy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the board to move? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Item number two. Does Aunt Maggie want to take a picture with us?
No. That was a little, uh, a little bold.
We're talking on the wall, we're not saying.
Which is comments from the public. This is a time set aside by the Board of Commissioners to allow individuals five minutes each to address the board on issues concerning the county. Total time set aside for public comments, thirty minutes. First person we have that has signed up is Derek Halberg. Please go forward and state your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Derek Halberg. My address, home residence, is 421 Gambit Circle in Wake Forest, but I come tonight to speak briefly with you in my capacity as Executive Director of Tar River Land Conservancy, whose office is located at 121 North Main Street here in Lewisburg. I'm following up tonight on the Conservancy's proposal inviting the county to join our organization in the town of Franklinton in establishing a new nature preserve on 134 acre property known as the Annie Edwards Tract. Since we submitted our most recent proposal to you all in August, I'm delighted to report that additional funding has been raised for this project. This will allow us to reduce the amount requested from the county's RAC and LO fund to 265,500. An investment from the county in this amount will amount to 20% of the funds that are needed for Phase One of the project, which is the land acquisition phase. The other 80% of the funds needed for the first phase have been secured. Those funds will be coming from the state, from the town of Franklinton, and a number of private donors. As a reminder, the county's contribution to this project will go completely towards the Conservancy's acquisition of the tract. We have a separate budget for the second phase, and I'm happy to report that we have secured funding commitments for 100% of the cost to be able to improve and ready the site for public access, which we hope can be completed by sometime in 2027. To highlight the expected outcomes of the projects and the benefits for the people here in Franklin County, the Tar River Land Conservancy will acquire the 134 acre tract, which will be improved and managed as a nature preserve and open to the public year round. This will be our organization's sixth nature preserve that's open to the public and our first in Franklin County. This preserve will feature three to four miles of hiking trails that will wind through hardwood and pine forest areas, past two beautiful ponds, along scenic creeks, and past historic features, namely the remnants of an old grist mill and a long forgotten cemetery. Visitors will access the trails from a parking area to be construction on the property near West River Road. We also envision a trail connecting Franklinton Park, which touches the Annie Edwards Tract, making it easier for families using the park's playground to explore the preserve's nature trails. To ensure that the property remains a nature preserve in perpetuity, Franklin County and the town of Franklinton would jointly hold a conservation easement on 51 acres. The state of North Carolina, due to their investment in the project, would hold a conservation easement on the remaining 83 acres of the property. Tar River Land Conservancy is grateful and excited to partner with the county on this project. We're eager to secure your funding commitment, which will allow us to move forward with the property acquisition and to start planning for the site improvements to begin after the transfer of ownership. If this board is able to commit the 265,500 that we've requested, we will have secured 100% of the funds needed to be able to proceed with this project. Thank you all for your service to the people and to the businesses who call Franklin County home, including Tar River Land Conservancy. And thank you for exploring the partnership over many conversations with Tar River Land Conservancy to create a new outdoor recreational destination that we're sure everyone will enjoy. Thanks.
Thank you. Next person to sign up to speak is Dan Engine.
Good evening, Commissioners. I stand before you tonight not as a critic, but as a citizen with strong, has been a strong advocate for open and ethical government. I'm here to challenge the practice that frankly undermines public trust. Small group meetings used to discuss county business, this tactic, which as I understand it began during Commissioner Shriver's tenure as chair, and while Kim didn't serve as county manager, may be technically legal. But let it, let it be clear, legality is not the same as integrity. These meetings are widely seen, not just here, but across the state, as a way to sidestep the spirit of the open meetings laws in North Carolina. Laws that exist specifically to protect transparency and accountability. Yes, closed sessions are allowed under narrow, well-defined circumstances, but they were never intended to be, become routine. They were never meant to be stretched into a loophole. When you deliberate outside the public eye, you deny the citizens a chance to understand your reasoning, your priorities, and the full impact of your decision. Although such meetings seem efficient, efficiency is not an excuse. Public service demands more than just checking the legal box. It demands ethical leadership, and it demands trust. And in government, perceptions matter. The appearance of secrecy can erode confidence. Even with a hint of impropriety can damage public faith. So I'll ask plainly, are small group meetings ethical? Do they reflect the values that you were elected to uphold? If the answer is no, or maybe, or not sure, that the practice should be stopped. I urge you to treat this, to treat all gatherings where county businesses discussed as an open, to, as subject to the open meetings law. Doing so will send a clear message that this board values transparency, respects its constituents, and understands trust is earned, not assumed. Transparency should never be treated as a burden. It is and must remain the foundation of public confidence. Thank you for your time and for your willingness to leave Franklin County to be the best county it can be.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Next person who is signing up to speak is Rosemary Champ.
Good evening. Rosemary Champ, 1168 White Level Road, Lewisburg, North Carolina. In public comment, can y'all hear me? In public comment, the citizens speak to you. At the end of the meeting, the Commissioners give their comments and carefully crack lectures. We are all Franklin County, all of us. The vision should be our vision, our inclusive. To do that, we the people need to be included in the conversation. As leaders entrusted with stewarding Franklin County resources and future, your presence and participation are essential, as is ours. You have been invited to a town hall at Lewisburg High School on October 17th at 7:00 PM. Everybody got an invitation, we've gotten some of the RSVPs back. This is a chance for you to do what you're elected to do, and that's listen to the people. It's not your vision, it's our vision, and we need to go forth that way. Thank you.
Last person we have that has signed up. Scott Strick. Scott, 38435 Highway 56, Lewisburg.
I'm, I'm gonna tell y'all, you know, putting on this golf tournament was a great thing. We didn't have the people's participation that we want, but we learned something from these high school seniors. One of them is one of our paramedic sons that worked for Franklin County that participated. These guys like to beat 50-year-plus people playing golf. They lost by two strokes. Out of all the teams were scared of the rain, they come on out, didn't gripe about nothing. They get hit the course and they went to work, 67 to 69, that's a pretty good score. The golf pro was rare, watching them all day, and he said, you know, this, this team right here is gonna go far. And them four seniors out of Lewisburg, I'm proud to tell y'all that they were well behaved. If one hit the ball the wrong way, they went over there and said, let me have, let me have to do it. And then they practiced again, and then they do it again. And it's just, it was really great. Um, and if I had to do it all over again, I would, I'd do it again tomorrow. I mean, just watching them teach us how to be servants of the community and letting them have fun on a Saturday out there, and they just taught us so much how to respect and quit the hatred and all this. It was just, I mean, just being there was something. And even the, even the guys that was on the fire department, they'd come together from Bun and White Level to create the team that they had, and they were just telling them how well, and they looked at them and said, guys, we have been beat by some great people. Y'all have come as close as you did, this is just, and so I want to appreciate y'all, everybody that helped us put this on. I mean, we're gonna try to do it again, it's just a bad timing, you know, and it happens like that. But to have fun like we did, it, it was worth every, every penny that we spent. But I appreciate y'all for letting us do this, but we learned something too from them. I sat up here and talked about how we're training to do what we're doing for us being community emergency response team. Did y'all know that that was the first course that they teach in the school, in the Mercy Medical at the school? Rodney Mellon called me the other day, he said, Scott, we're teaching this in public school. He said, we teach the CERT program first, then we do the EMT. So we're, what we're doing now is creating a place for these kids to come and do after they get these certificates. They're doing the hands-on portion of the medical part of it right there in school, and then they're moving right into the EMT course right after that. So it was a learning experience for us, learning that they're teaching it there too, in our public school. And so we're excited about that because I picked up three out of, at Lewisburg that join our team. And so that's great, that's what's gonna keep it alive after we're gone. And so that's what's all about, but I thank y'all.
Thank you, Scott. That concludes public comment for tonight, brings us to item number three, public hearing. Public hearing of proposed issuance of a more serious obligation bond. The board will conduct a public hearing and consider adoption of a resolution making required findings and approving a financial and approving a, and financing arrangement for various capital projects through the issuance of limited obligation bond. Under NCGS 1C10A, the county proposes to issue LOB in a principal amount not exceeding 6 million.
Sixty.
Sixty million.
Yeah, me too.
And accept the proposal of Webster Bank National Association to purchase the bonds subject to final board approval. The application is scheduled to be submitted to the LGC on October 8th, 2025. The final approval will be submitted to the Board of Commissioners on November 3rd, 2025. The LGC will provide final approval on November 4th, 2025. The projected closing on the financing is November 12th, 2025. At this time, I want to ask, make a motion that we conduct a public hearing.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, we are now in the public hearing, so anyone who would like to speak for or against, as you're timed, please go forward. Here none, I'm, I'm motion to close the vote.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Question. What, that 60 million, what all does that include? I know, I guess, the jail facility or judicial project, is that it? Or what else is underneath that?
It's funding for the judicial complex, sheriff's office, our maintenance shop, also for the senior center slash EMS center.
Okay, fine, okay, okay.
Economic development.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Nations regarding the proposed financing of the purchase of, approved the resolution that was sent, submitted to your, your, so if somebody's willing to make that motion.
Make the motion that we accept the resolution presented if the turn is required.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. That brings us to item number four, our next items. Item 4A is the Franklinton Senior Center, in Station Field of Duty.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, it's his pleasure tonight, I stand before you to present the bids, the bid tabulation for the Franklin County EMS and Senior Center located in Franklinton, North Carolina. Thank you. And I have with me tonight Stuart Curran, who was our project manager for this project, and Joe Klemic, who was a project manager with a second project to present to you tonight. So, there we go. This is the bid, certified bid tabulation for the EMS and Senior Center project. Just a couple of facts about that. Our, our bid date was Thursday, September 26th. We had eight bidders submit a price for this project. As you can see, the overall bidders, there's actually one. As you can see, the overall bidders, there's actually one more on the second page there. We did have three bidders that we expected to submit who did not submit. Lots of really good interest in the project, and the overall bid range was from $4,290,000 to $5,600,000. Although, I will admit, like to note that the first, the lowest bids were all very close together. So, the $5 million is a little bit of an outlier in all the bids submitted. The lowest responsive, responsible bidder was HG Reynolds Incorporated out of Henderson with a base bid amount of $4,290,000. Also included in their bid was an alternate bid for an additional $112,000. That alternate bid is to cover re-roofing of the existing building. In the base bid, it just included patching for the areas that were being touched with moving mechanical units. So, the 112, if you choose to accept, that would be to re-roof the entire building. And should that be your choice, the total cost at that point would be $4,402,000. Again, the project itself is about 11,700 square feet of existing construction, another 2,700 square feet or so of new, two additional bays for the EMS. So, overall, when we do the math, it's about $316 a square foot if all the costs were accepted. So, at this time, we would recommend to you that you award this project to HG Reynolds Incorporated as the lowest responsive, responsible bidder.
Have some questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Four million, 290,000. And that's just to take that existing facility?
So...
Looks like it would almost be cheaper to start from scratch.
Well, one of the things that is required by code for that facility is because we are changing the use, it is currently a retail mercantile-type facility in the building code. We are changing it to a business use because it's a county-owned facility. So, that includes all updating for life safety. In addition, as you can imagine, right now, it's an open space, but we're creating two very unique spaces in there. And it's about half and half, I will say, in the existing building. So, the senior center has offices, a check-in, billiards, all of those things. So, there's completely new mechanical systems being in place and electrical systems for the uses that are there now. And we're cutting floors for new plumbing. There's a lot of new plumbing required in both facilities because of the code requirements for the number of people in there. So, that is some of the... It is a good building, but it has a lot of work to do to create these spaces in that building.
So, you think it's less expensive to do it this way than building it from...
I do not, because, and I'll say this, in our current market that we're in, new construction from ground up is anywhere from $400 to $500 a square foot. This comes in at right over 300, which does, could seem expensive. But from a ground-up construction, it would be more expensive just by the sheer magnitude of the cost. We have a good structure, we have a good foundation, good parking, that's all usable as it is.
So, basically, it is more cost-effective versus the 450 per square foot at 316?
Yes, sir, yes.
Is there any consideration given if we choose to do the 112 to re-roof the whole roof? That the money that's been put into this budget for the patching where they're moving things, that come out of this, come out of the overall bid?
The way the bids work, the $112,000 for the alternate is the amount additional to the bid. So, that's already been accounted for, so it's not... So, whatever the difference was already accounted for in that bid number.
How much was that item, do you know?
I do not without asking, so.
What is the term on the existing roof? Lifetime, do you know?
I don't know. I believe that the facilities director said that the roof was...
Not in good shape?
Not in great shape.
Sure.
Probably, he suggested that we replace it.
And that's why we put it as an alternate, to identify what that cost would be. I'm not sure that it's had major work done to it since the building was constructed. And I don't believe we saw any indication that said it had been replaced since it was constructed.
Any more questions?
One more. Remind me, because the back half of this will be the EMS, but is there a lot of concrete or asphalt or patching exterior of the building that's part of this? As far as is new concrete having to get poured, or...
We had, well, we have a brand-new, so again, in the price, we have 2,700 square feet of brand-new building. Outside of that, what we tried to do was keep the existing parking with some separation. So, we have added additional, I believe, 11 parking spaces for EMS staff near their sleeping, or near their living quarters that separated from the daily public staff. We did isolate the entries in and out of the bays from the senior center side. So, there's minimal work there, actually, and I can tell you, because we ask for these numbers, the amount of site work included in that bid was $330,000. So, fairly minimal in the overall scheme of things.
Thank you.
Included a new sign, signage outside and things like that, too.
If I may, Chairman, just want to remind that with the airport rail DMS stations were approximately 6,000 square feet. They came in approximately around $3 million each. This is 12,000 square feet, a little less, then we're adding another 2,700. And just as a reminder, those bids were received about two years ago. It's a very bright price on that.
Thank you.
So, what is the pleasure of the board?
Make the motion to approve the action request.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, is that with the alternate or is that...
We can address it later time, it's my understanding.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Brings us to... Let the judicial complex be...
I'll just carry right on. Thank you again. So, we also have, bring to you tonight the bid tabulation, certified bid tabulation for the Franklin Judicial Center and Annex renovations. This project was bid September 30th. We had five bids submitted. This is a much larger project, as you know. And our overall bid range for this one was from $34,298,000 to $42,335,280, so $35,280. Again, in this, the four lowest bids were very tight together. The highest bid was a little, was a pretty, much larger spread in the bid ranges. So, I didn't say before, but when the bids are tight like that, that tells us they're all looking at the same thing, is how we say. So, there's no, not as many unknowns. The lowest responsive, responsible bidder for this Judicial Center and Annex renovations was TCC Enterprises Incorporated out of Lewisburg, and their base bid amount was $34,298,000. That cost, again, this project is 71,000 or 2,000 square feet total. 14,000 of that is complete renovation of the annex. So, that building will, the outside walls will stand, but the inside will completely be redone. New heating, new air, everything. And then, the judicial center itself is about 51,000 square feet of a three-story building and all the parking. And this includes lots of the adjacent, all the block and around Johnson Street and across the street for the site and parking. It does include all of the recommendations, all of the requirements made to have a complete operational courtroom system, including Sally Port and holding area. So, the construction there is a little more intensive than just normal construction. The bids came in there at $478 a square foot. So, we felt like that was also a good bid for this type of construction. There was one alternate for this project as well. That, again, was roofing, a roofing system. The base bid has a complete roof system in it for the whole of this project, including the annex. This alternate is an upgraded roofing system. It basically would be a system that doubles the warranty to a forty... A forty-year warranty rather than a 20-year warranty. So, that's $110,000 that was bid as an alternate.
Twenty years to forty years on the roof.
For a hundred and ten thousand dollars warranty.
Is that paraded, if we go 22 years and we have a problem and have to replace it, do we still pay for the 22 years we've done and they warranted the 18?
I do not know the answer to that, but we can certainly find out.
Those are good answers, though.
Yeah. I know we had, Joe did lots of research in just both systems, and we felt like the alternate was, had enough merit to put out for bid and to make that decision based on the cost. So, should you choose the alternate, the total cost of this project is $34,408,000? Should you not, the base bid at $34,298,000 would be the cost.
Does that include what they're doing, well, that does include what they're doing over right now, getting rid of that movie theater?
Not the demo cost, no, sir. That was separate, yes, sir.
Any other questions?
And we would recommend that you award this project to TCC Enterprises in whatever amount you choose.
Very lowest bidder.
The lowest responsive, responsible bidder, yes, sir. And we had five very good bidders, so.
Questions, though? What's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve the action request.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Brings us to C, Johnson Street Electrical Realignment Bill.
Good evening, Commissioners. The award that is before you is the bid tabulation for the judicial complex electrical realignment. The reason we were doing this to pull it out of the major construction project of the courthouse was to not delay the building of the courthouse. The electrical power lines that run along Johnson Street on the north side of it, as you can see on the illustration, is in the path of the footprint of the new courthouse. So, it does have to be removed. So, we're shifting it on your yellow line on your screen to the south side of Johnson to get it out of the way. And there's a couple things that have to be done with that, not only to bury the electrical lines, but also include cable and fiber of spectrum and bright speed that provides service to the courthouse and also provides service as a pass-through to other businesses and residences in the area. So, in this bid process, the bid date was September 18th. Given up for seven days, we opened the first set, we arrived at the first bid opening with only one bid and not three, so we had to re-advertise again for another seven days. And we were able to open up a bid that was, two bids that were submitted. C Phase Services out of Kinston was the lowest responsive, responsible bidder with a base bid amount of $838,181.97. They did submit all bid forms that was requested. One of the things that we did look at and found during the bid process during the second extension onsite was that we were notified that a lot of, some rock in the area of the grass may cause a expense to go higher. And the bidder did include that they exclude striking rock during their building of a trench. So, we did not have time enough to throw a unit price in there in the bid process to hit the second bidder. So, what we are asking for is a contingency for the unforeseen circumstances. And we listed it 15%. There's three things that could be unforeseen in the bid process. Is one, when we run the transformers to Main Street and Johnson Street that are gonna be sitting above the ground, we're gonna have to use a little more of the footprint of the ground, which is where you see a retaining wall on the elevated parking area. So, it's gonna have to dig into that a little more in order to occupy a junction box and two transformers that are coming down off of a power pole. It's necessary to put the three-phase transformers there because that area services all electricity of the businesses on Main Street, as well as the old courthouse. So, we're gonna have to take away the corner wall, which the town has already removed their lettering and their seal from the wall. And the contractors might have to dig into that elevated parking area, so we're gonna have to close a portion of that down because it could be unsafe. But the contractor is in their bid is to stabilize it, but may not engineer it. So, we may have to take another measure to make it safer for the public that is not gonna be included in the contractor's bid for that contingency. So, staff is recommending that you award the contract to C Phase Services in the amount selected by the Board of Commissioners with their base bid and the contingency of $125,817.30, making the total $963,999.27.
Now, it's the low bid.
Yes.
And how close, Troy, were the other two? I couldn't quite, I didn't quite read it, were there...
My apologies. So, we had five that, five contractors that requested to bid, we received two bids. The lowest bid was the $138,000, and the highest bid was an even $2 million, making a difference of 1.1 million.
Any other questions? Here none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve the action request.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Okay.
Have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
The next one. Perry Chapel Church Road Water System Improvements.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here to, myself, along with Peter Galen from the Wooton Company, are here to present the bid results from the Perry's Chapel Church Road Water System Improvements project that we have. The project purpose is, it's a blending station. We're relocating our blending station that is at the Novo Nessus water tank, although it's a county water tank, it just happens to be on the corner of their, at their property. That blending station takes three sources of our water and blends them together and puts it into the tank. Our three sources that go into that tank are Lewisburg, the county, which is the Henderson water, and our water plant that is on the west side of Franklinton. And it meters it before it sends it up to the water tank. So, the current station's underground. I like to call it a submarine, it's a big metal cylinder. It's not safe for staff, water and electricity don't go well together. So, the purpose of this project is to move all of that equipment above ground and make it safer. Along with that, we're going to install VFDs, variable frequency drives, at the May's Crossroads Booster Station, which is, that's what helps get the water from the county system Henderson water over towards that side of the county, towards that water tank. And then, also, we're gonna do some electrical and SCADA upgrades while we're there. I will ask Peter to come up to go over the bid.
So, yeah, we've had...
Um, so yeah, we, uh, we, we've had a bid date of, uh, Sep- uh, September twenty-third. Uh, we did not receive three bids at that time, uh, and so we had to re-advertise similar to what Troy had to do. Actually, we, we re-advertised for a, a week in Franklin Times. Um, reopened bids on the first of October, had one, one bidder, uh, that was HG Reynolds. The incidental, they, they came to the, uh, original bid planned on opening, or having their bid there if we had three to open, but we didn't. So they came back, uh, a week later. Uh, as you can see, their, their bid amount, their base bid was two million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred dollars. Uh, we also had two, uh, bid alternates in there. One to take the submersible out of, uh, the, out of the ground, uh, post-construction just for ease of, uh, ease of maintenance in the future. Uh, and then the county, uh, owns and operates, well, I guess doesn't operate anymore. They have a, a booster pump station along Highway fifty-six that is just not being used right now. And so they said, while they, while we have a contractor out there, let's see what, uh, what the price is to do that. Um, Chris, Chris elected not to, uh, move forward with that alternate, but, uh, would like to do the base bid and alternate one, uh, for a total bid amount of two million, eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars and two hundred and sixteen. That's a tricky thing to say. Um, so HG Reynolds is the, uh, most, uh, responsive and responsible bidder. Um, we have a, uh, a letter that I, I sent to Chris that, uh, you guys, um, this, and back up for a minute. This is a, an ARPA project and so the state has to review and approve all of the, uh, the, the, the bid documentation. So what we are recommending, uh, tonight is a tentative award, uh, contingent on DWI approving the bid documents. Um, an additional, as, as Chris has at the bottom here, uh, the, the, the county should have a construction contingency in the amount of five percent. And that's again, is a, a state requirement. So with that, like, as I, as I said, our, our recommendation is to award it to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, uh, and, uh, happy to take any questions y'all have at this time.
Any idea why there was only one bidder?
Couple of things, it being an ARPA project and just all of the ARPA projects that are out there right now. There's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of projects that out, that are out there. Contractors are a little bit selective right now, uh, and this is a little bit of a unique project. It's not strictly waterline, it's not strictly buildings. We're, we're putting two buildings in. We have a decent amount of waterline, but not a, not a ton for a, a line work contractor. Uh, so it's just, that's a, a little bit of a unique project. That's the, is the big reason for it.
Mr. Chairman, before you vote, um, you're not only adopting the most responsive bill, bidder, uh, that you're also adopting a resolution, um, to support ARPA. Are you going to talk about that? Okay, sorry.
So tonight, um, the recommendation of the Wooton Company and county staff is to approve the resolution, resolution of tentative award. That is an ARPA slash state requirement. Tentatively award the contract to HG Reynolds Company in the amount of two million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which includes, that includes the five percent contingency. So, and also authorize the use of one million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars from the Public Utilities Fund balance to cover the difference between what is allocated for the ARPA funds for this particular project versus the bid. Uh, because when we got the part, the ARPA money, it was eighteen months to two, when we started that. So obviously we all know costs have gone up. And then authorizing the county manager to sign the construction contract with HG Reynolds Company and any other required documents pending review by the county attorney. And Peter and I stand by to answer any questions you may have.
So roughly one point six million is off.
Okay. Close, close enough. Right, yeah.
Well, we're using one point six million of ARPA money to go with our one point three to get to the two point nine.
And engineering fees.
Okay, alright.
Hey, any other questions? Alright, most pleasure on the board.
Here, I make a motion that we approve the recommendation and action item requested.
Much. Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to letter E. USC recommended to fill the allocation.
I'm back. Didn't go very far, but anyway. So, uh, I stand before you to present the water and sewer allocation requests that were recently, um, recommended at the September tenth, twenty twenty-five Utility Advisory Committee meeting. All of these allocation requests were approved unanimously by the U, Utilities Advisory Committee. All of these projects that I will present tonight will have an effective date of January one, twenty twenty-six, when their allocation will become effective. And their award letter will state the same. I will go through all the projects, but will ask for a motion at the end for all, all projects. First is the Youngsville Farm subdivision. It's a fifty-unit subdivision. It's, it's a new project. USC recommended it on September tenth unanimously with the allocation effective date of January one of twenty-six and a record date of the plat, January one of twenty twenty-eight. Next is, the request is for the legacy subdivision, phase one, A B number two. It's for fifty units. It's an existing project. Uh, USC recommended it unanimously. Allocation will be effective, uh, January one, twenty twenty-six with a record date of the plat, January one, twenty twenty-eight. Oak Park subdivision is the next one. It's, uh, fifty units. It's an existing project. Um, unanimously, unanimously approved. Allocation will be effective January first, twenty twenty-six with a record date of twenty twenty-eight, January first. Next will be Sorrel Oaks subdivision, phase two. This is a water-only project. Uh, this is for forty-three lots. This will complete their, the subdivision. It was unanimously recommended. Allocation will be effective January one, twenty twenty-eight with the record date of January, I'm sorry, January one, twenty twenty-six and a record date of January one, twenty twenties, twenty twenty-eight. There is a typo on the slide and I do apologize for that. Freeman Farms, phase four. It's an existing project. This is for thirty-three lots. It will finish out this project. Uh, USC, uh, recommended it unanimously September tenth of this year. Allocation will be effective January one, twenty twenty-six with a record date of January one, twenty twenty-eight. Next subdivision is Horseman's Trail subdivision. Fifty units. It's a new project. USC recommended it unanimously. Allocation will be effective January one, twenty, of twenty twenty-six with a record date of January one, twenty twenty-eight. Next would be the request for Hunter Place B subdivision. It is a new project, fifty units. Uh, allocation effective date, January first, twenty twenty-eight. Or twenty twenty-six, I'm sorry, and a record date of January first, twenty twenty-eight. Next one is Hunter Place C subdivision. Unanimously recommended by the USC. Allocation effective January one, twenty twenty-six. Record date of January one, twenty twenty-eight. Another request, or a request for Grayland subdivision, forty units. This is a new project. This is a water-only subdivision. Unanimous, unanimously recommended. Allocation effective January one, twenty twenty-six and a record date of January one, twenty twenty-eight. A request for Conyers Meadows Town Homes, fifty units. It's a new project. Uh, allocation effective January one, twenty twenty-six with the record date of January one, twenty twenty-eight. Conyers Woods Mixed Use. It's a combination of single-family and townhomes. Fifty units slash lots. It's a new project. Recommended unanimously by the USC. Allocation effective January one, twenty twenty-six and a record date of January one, twenty twenty-eight. And the, the only non-residential request in this, uh, this item, it will be for the Green Leaf Apartments Complex, twenty-four units. It's a new project. unanimous, unanimously recommended. Allocation date of January one, twenty twenty-six with a record date of January one, twenty twenty-eight. So for calendar year twenty twenty-six, we allocated out five, uh, sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty gallons per day out of the seventy-five thousand gallons per day. That is per ordinance. That leaves us fifty-three, five thousand, three hundred and forty gallons per day for administrative approvals. Um, and recommendations to consider and approve the Utility Advisory Committee recommendations from the September tenth, twenty twenty-five Utilities Adver, Utilities Advisory Committee. I stand by to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? How much water application you got left?
I will have to look at the, I will have to look at the water census right now, but we, there's, there's, we've got enough out there.
For how much?
I'd have to look at the census to give a true answer. I will, we will get back to you on that one.
Just wondering, we're on.
Yeah, understood.
But you don't, you don't know that offhand?
Not off the top of my head, no, sir.
What? Here, now, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the USC's recommended water and sewer allocation requests.
Take a dip.
Have a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to letter E. Water, sewer allocation ordinance.
I'm still here. Okay, so, chapter thirty-four, the utilities ordinance within the Code of Ordinances for the county. Uh, we are ac, we're asking for an amendment to update section thirty-four dash two, B four. The change to have it say water remaining at the end of the year. Any expired allocation or unused allocation from a prior calendar year may be made available in a subsequent calendar year at the discretion of the Utilities Advisory Committee, even if the total allocation for that calendar year exceeds the gallons per day limit in subsection B one above. And that's the seventy-five thousand gallons per day that is listed in our ordinance. Uh, the recommendation from staff would be to request the board to approve the recommended changes to the water and sewer allocation ordinance effective upon adoption. The recommended motion shall indicate that the specified section of the Code and Ordinance, Code of Ordinances in Franklin County, North Carolina, is hereby amended and read as presented in the proposed for adoption document. I stand by to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? So, so Chris, this is like, this is, um, for projects that maybe didn't come, didn't come to fruition and so they're not going to move forward with building, uh, whether their houses or apartments or whatever. They, we gave them the water. Couple of years later, they still have, they're not moving forward and, and now their allocation has expired? And we've kind of accumulated that, is it?
That, that is, that is, that is correct.
Okay. So whatever we accumulate that is expired, then the Utility Advisory Committee could actually, in addition to the water, we give out seventy-five thousand gallons. They could actually go in and say, you've got fifteen thousand gallons of water that didn't get, that have expired from allocation and you can offer them, uh, to the current, uh, list to move forward and do ninety thousand.
Do, or whatever, maybe, correct.
Add to the seventy-five.
Add to the seventy-five, yes, sir.
Good. I think that's important because, um, if we give it out one time and it doesn't get used and it expires, we're in the business of selling water, not holding it. So I think that's, you know, that's good.
That is correct.
So what, what, just for the, just for the general public out there, because water's, you know, fairly complex, uh, issue here in Franklin County. But bef, before, what, what would have, what would the USC and the county have done with that expired water? Where, where would it have gone?
It would have gone, come back into the preferable water bucket. And it will stay there and until we use seventy-five thousand and it would just kind of get added to the bottom.
And the credit to the, cut balance sheet or a credit to your checkbook. Now you got.
Correct. We have a water credit, basically.
But you can still only spend that seventy-five thousand, even though you've got an extra fifteen.
Correct.
Any other questions, Tom here?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, uh, this amendment.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Yep.
Alright, it brings us to item number five. Board Manager, clerk's coming. Adam Turner? Adam clerk? Ford?
Uh, yes, I, uh, my report, I had the honor and privilege to attend or be part of the airport EMS facility ribbon cutting. Went real good. Been a real impressive building over there. Uh, I was with, we had the special use hearing that was for that eleven-hundred acre solar farm. And that went good, got all approved. Went pretty good. The way I looked at it, that eleven-hundred acres, it's probably better off sometimes having solar farms that is eleven-hundred tons coming in, maybe. To keep it from growing up like that. Uh, I noticed Christie and her staff back there were diligently working on checking out the emergency nine-one-one communication improvement, the, the radio towers and stuff. She stayed on top of that one because we definitely want to get what we're paying for on this radio system. She was, noticed her and her staff going at it here a few days ago. So, anyway, keep up good work over there. And that's, uh, concludes my report.
Yeah, just, um, September was busy. Um, I don't want to bore you with all the details, but, uh, it was, it was a, it was a good month and, uh, county had a lot of things going on that, um, got to meet a lot of people. So the nine-eleven ceremony, um, was, was well done. Mark did a great job, uh, with that and, and all the speakers that stepped up. That was just phenomenal. Friday, uh, Stuart and Ryan, uh, and myself, I'm sure Mark was there too. Mark again with the Farm City Luncheon, um, and, uh, huge turnout. Um, it was, it was phenomenal and, uh, just a really good time to spend with the farmers. So if you, you don't know, I'm from the Youngsville side of things and it's a little busier down there. And so the farmlands not nearly as plentiful. Um, but it's good to get up and, um, see those guys and what they do and the hard work and whether it's tobacco, soybeans, or corn, or whatever, wheat, whatever it is. So, um, that was good. And, um, Youngsville's got a lot of stuff going on. Uh, we can talk about that further, but maybe not tonight. Other than that, I'm good. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Brown?
Um, just, it's, uh, it's been a good time here in Franklin County for the month of September. A lot of different festival activities in fall, certainly here. Just trying to get here and then Larson goes back to eighty-three degrees, but I think we're going to finally get there in the next week or so. So, uh, you know, take, take a little time to look around. Uh, there's a lot of fun things that are going on as we kind of break from summer and start to feel that cool air in the morning. Uh, a lot of pumpkins to be had, made a few hay rides and, and, uh, maybe another golf tournament for, uh, Mr. Strickland back there, so. But anyways, it's, it's good to be in Franklin.
Yes, sir. I went to the ribbon cutting also for the new, uh, airport EMS station. And I, I always considered my rescue people and my EMS people and my firemen all, real heroes. And you guys, y'all got a nice building to work out of now. Also, I went to, uh, Manufactory Day at Novo. They had a real nice program also. And thirdly, I went across the road from where I lived at to my neighbors. He had the, uh, the annual Farm City Celebration. Had a good meal over there, good fellowship. And, uh, they my neighbors, I always look, look out for each other. We had a good time over there. If you didn't, if, uh, you missed it, missed a lot, then you saw. Thank you.
Commissioner C, next comment. Commissioner Brett?
Um, I did attend the help board meeting this month. Um, the Board of Help meeting, they're doing good. And I attended the first Fridays in Franklinton. Um, and their Franklin Fest is coming up in a couple of Saturdays at this, for Franklin Fest. And y'all can look on the calendar, I don't remember what the date of it is. And there were a lot of meetings and a lot of activities and a lot of events that I missed because of my accident. And I want to thank each of you for reaching out to me after my accident because I was down for a while. And I want to thank each of you for reaching out to me after my accident because I was down for a while. Um, thank you for for contacting me and and let me know that you were praying for me and stuff like that. I appreciate that. So um and Chairman Bun, at this time, I would like to bring a motion before the board.
Good.
To allocate to the Tar River Land Conservancy the six hun- the two hundred and sixty five thousand, five hundred out of the Franklinton Wreck and Lou funds to support the purchase of the Annie Annie Edwards track of land to establish Franklin County's first public nature preserve um for its citizens in Franklin County. We've been talking about this for a while, so I'll put that in form of my motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the boards there, say.
Can we have um just a couple, can we have some discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. It's a neat project for sure. There's a lot of stuff about it that I like. Obviously, my concern with this is that uh and I shared with the board, I think the last last time or whatever. My concern with this is the number keeps dropping down, which I shouldn't complain about that anytime that the sales price of something goes down. But um I am a little concerned because if we had taken this approach early on and we had voted on this early on, this number would have been, we would have it would have been substantial, I think. It was eight eight hundred and ninety, and here we are to two sixty five. I'm not trying to sound ungrateful for that necessarily, but you know, you keep watching this come down. So um you know, want the best deal for the county. Obviously, I have to be wise in my vote and judicious in my vote with the taxpayers' money. Um, so that's a that's a holdup for me, Commissioner Bragg. Uh, not necessarily that, you know, the project itself, but um just making sure.
All right, this doesn't come out of general funds.
It's wreck and loop.
Rec wreck and loop, which is out of the Franklinton.
That's right.
Area, so it's not general fund money.
Paid by the developers.
Huh?
Sure. Paid by the developer.
That's right. That's right. And I did get a chance before my accident to meet with Derek, and we sat down and worked through the numbers. And you know, some more funds did come in, but we feel like we're we're at the bottom at of what they're going to be able to get brought in and working with the numbers. So at this time, it's time to we've been talking about this for ever since I've been on the board, this project. It's been it's ongoing. So it it's time for us to go over, go ahead and and support it, I feel like.
I understand Franklin got a a grant to really offset that figure you were talking about.
Right. They did five hundred thousand.
Mr. Chairman, um, I've got a few thoughts and comments. Um. I'm not against the idea. I'm against the county spending money on this. Because it's not the role of the Tar River Land Conservancy to spend our park money. It's the role of the government to identify uses for it, A. B. Developers give up this money so that they don't have to put in playground. And they don't have to put in jungle gym. They don't have to put in bar form thing. They don't have to put in sidewalks and all these other things that we as the board approve for our planning to say if they want to build a dense neighborhood, they've got to put playground. They've got to put places for that community to recreate. So the burden doesn't become, like you said, Commissioner Bragg, it doesn't come upon the burden of taxpayers who are already have paid their taxes on their honey bacon farm and got horse trails and farm paths and all kinds of places in their own pond. They don't need to be taxed. But my biggest holdup with this is this. This project does not give children a place to play ball. It doesn't give any resemblance of what a real park is in today's world. A classic example of a park today being done is in Roseville. It's called the the Farm. If you Google Roseville, the Farm, you will see an amazing vision of a hundred plus acre tract area where they're starting out with some ball fields and tennis courts and basketball courts and a small uh building for like restrooms and things like that. But they've got a master plan of what they want that whole thing to look like. And they've got some agriculture plots out there, and they've got a walking trail and some things like that that could be out there. But it's things for kids. And we've got children that are living on quarter acre, fifth acre, eighth acre lots that barely have a yard to play in. That's what this money was made was put aside for. That's why the state of North Carolina allowed this type of thing to happen, to take the burden off of county taxpayers for growth in their communities and make the developers who come here and develop raw land, make them put in parks. And if they don't want to do that, they can write a check. And we'll take that money and we'll be good stewards of it, and we'll go buy land, be sure we can have those types of thing. Sure, there's a there's a nice chunk of money sitting in this wreck and loop fund. And now it's more important than ever that we start to get together and put together a comprehensive plan for our recs department that gives towns an opportunity to to have their their par- have parks. And maybe the county goes to a centralized location where we make really one monster park that we could grow over the period of five or ten or fifteen years. It would just be an enormous, amazing place for kids to come play, all kinds of athletic activities, or seniors to come and be able to walk, play pickleball, and whatever else comes together on that. But to get a plan, right now, all we're doing is grabbing a little bit because it's sitting there. Grabbing a little bit because it's sitting there. It's not just sitting there to be grabbed. It's collecting up so we can do something amazing. So those are my thoughts with it. It's nothing against Franklinton. It's nothing against Tar River Conservancy. It's nothing against the Annie Edwards property. It's about a bigger vision, and it's one that directly impacts children. So that's why I won't be supporting this.
This sort of um expands the Franklinton Park, which we've spent a lot of money on developing in Franklinton that is owned by the county because it does join that um on the backside so that, you know, the children can be in the park and play in, and there's nature trails that this will be nature trails in addition to and adjoining that park. So it, you know, will make a big, a large park at if we do this.
Challenge is is that even Franklinton Park, because I've coached ball on those fields, it's one softball field, one baseball field. That's it. So one group of girls can get together and play base uh basket uh softball, and one group of boys can get together and play baseball. That's it. Why can't we have six softball fields, six baseball fields, and ten pickleball slash tennis sports slash basketball? Why, you know, why why are we limiting ourselves? Because if we continue to just take a piece of it and put it here and a piece of it, put it there, we're never going to get the mass that we have to have the buying power to really do something incredible. All kinds of amazing things. So.
But we haven't come up with that type of thing. Nobody's come up with that plan in Franklin.
I've talked about it in the last sixty days, ninety days. Um, and I believe that uh we talked about possibly uh looking at creating something.
But we haven't done anything.
Well, we haven't done anything right this very second. No, we haven't. But uh at the end of the day, we make a hasty decision and do a little something and take a chunk away that inhibits us from being able to do something, you know, greater with more impact for kids. That's uh that that's my thoughts. A park for all of Franklin County, uh not just for Haytown, Youngsville, or Hay Franklin thing, or Hay Lewis for the board. I'll host them. Thank you.
I'd like to comment on that. I mean, this fund is growing all the time.
That's right.
It's going to be more inclusive for other projects and stuff. Nothing will just end if this would happen to go for a third of the proof here for the one hundred thirty four acres. Ongoing. There's more coming. And I don't know about a big master ball field. More as I could be at.
Yeah.
How about people down my way? Catch a bus and get rides over here to the ball field. It needs to be spread out, the project all across the county.
I think those kids enjoy them trails too.
Yeah.
Ain't that?
Yeah, I should I mean, I share I share Commissioner Shriver's viewpoint because I I'm fairly new at this and, you know, ten or eleven months. And there has been multiple requests of call it three hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. And so my my whole thought with this is there has to be somewhat of a plan for us as stewards of this money as we, you know, as we move forward. And so I I do share that. I do think this is a I do think this is a project that kids can enjoy. Um, I I I agree that, you know, a big ball field, something that can attract people from all different counties is is ideal. But there's a lot of synergy there with Franklinton Park. Um, there's uh a lot of good in the project. And so I'm probably going to break on this one, although I I I wasn't know I'm going to break on this one myself. I think I would support this project at this time. But we must put a a plan together moving forward um so that we're not reaching and grabbing and just snapping at three hundred thousand dollars willy nilly here.
All right, and there's limitations on how this money can be spent. I understand it can only be spent to purchase property. We can't put any playground. We can't put any, we can't put a pool in. We can't do anything with it that purchased the property.
Right.
That's the limitation.
So would as far as the financing all goes, would we be giving the money to the Tar River Land Conservancy? Where's the money go?
Derek, you want to speak to that? You're still here?
Yeah. First of all, thank you all for uh the robust discussion about this, and I share your vision for trying to come up with a a grand plan for Parks and Recreation here in the county. We would applaud that. Um, we've had the the honor of working with uh two counties, multiple municipalities on projects like this over the years. In the other instances where these projects have gone forth, uh, we figure out an agreement with uh the unit of government that we're working with to make sure that all parties know what the Conservancy is responsible for delivering, uh and you all get what you're investing in. Uh, it's no different than when we receive funding from uh private philanthropic foundations who have expectations for us when we receive their money uh or the state of North Carolina, who invest in a lot of Parks and Recreation, uh open space and water quality protection projects, wh- which all of these items would be included in this particular project. Uh, so we're not uh we're 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 certainly not uh unaccustomed to the idea of having everything very well spelled out in writing. Um, the conservation easement is a set of set of deed restrictions that makes sure that the investment from the county in this from the Wreck and Loop Fund, which is a, you know, General Assembly, uh, you know, guided set of monies that could be collected and used to make sure that, in fact, it stays in that use long term. We own uh seven thousand acres of land as an organization and manage it with our professional staff. Uh, but of that, we have five nature preserves that are open to the public year round, fifteen miles of hiking trail, all of which are currently in Granville County, but we're working on an active project in Person County right now and are in the planning phase for other counties, which I won't get into. We fully expect that the idea of nature trails can be something uh that everyone will enjoy and use based upon our experience. This is not something that only a few people are looking for. Study after study after study, including here in this county, shows that the very number one thing, when you ask folks, what are they missing from a recreational standpoint, places to get outside in nature and hike. We will deliver that one hundred percent. And we will work with you all. I have a full-time attorney on my staff. We will work with the county attorney to make sure and the county manager's office and the assistant county manager, Mr. Hammerbacher, who has been extraordinarily helpful in this whole discussion over the many, many months. We will work with you all to make sure that the investments you're making from this fund is something that will last and everyone will be proud of. It's not lost on me that you all have approved tonight water allocation for five hundred residential units. So I hear what Commissioner Foye is saying. That pot of money is going to grow. Did I answer the question?
I've got one one question.
Yes.
Apply to here. Um, you know, it's already damaged that this park is going to back up to the private park.
That's correct.
Is it going to be accessible as you plan for accessibility from the existing private park?
Uh, that is our our vision. To make that happen, it would require, you know, active involvement from your future parks director. And we're hoping the Parks and Rec Advisory Board that you all appoint to help advise you on that, to make sure we do it in a way. But the vision from day one has been that the people who already use the wonderful park that you all have invested in mightily over there, that they will have access to these hiking trails as an additional amenity for the people who already are predisposed to go and and recreate in this county. I can I tell you for sure that we have it laid out on the ground? We have not. We're not trying to get ahead of ourselves on that. Uh, but it's been a conver- topic of conversation on many days, and we are one hundred percent.
So what would the holdup, though, what you're saying would be if that wasn't able to take place, it would be because of the county?
Um, I'm saying I don't see that there's a way it'd be held up at all.
Okay.
Does the the land touch each other?
Yes, sir.
They don't have to cross a road or anything like that?
No.
No, it's in that top.
In that corner.
Yeah.
Um, one of the other thing that things that caught me off guard on Derek was um I was in a gathering where there was other county commissioners from other counties.
Yes, sir.
And um one of them hit hit me up and said, hey. And I said, yeah, I said, um, what have you done with business enough? He said, yeah. I said, I said, you know, they want two, three hundred and forty million, a thou- a thousand dollars? And he went he's like, how much? And I said, yeah. I said, we're not talking about, you know, lunch money here. And he said he had that he wasn't aware of doing projects like that. So my question is, in Granville County, what has been the average, you said you've had some parks there, how much?
Oh, sure.
Has Granville County put into something like that? Because they have the ability to correct the like the record.
Yeah, we well, they they don't currently, based on my conversations with the county manager and the county commissioners, who we we work with regularly. Um, although I think they're considering it. The the largest submission that I know of that they have made in any of our projects, two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, it was a very large uh contribution at the time, and it did come out of the general fund. So, you know, the decision was a little harder for them. Most of the other projects that we work on, I'll be honest with you, on a per dollar or per acre basis are much lower in cost than what this is going to turn out to be. We're we're in a a part of the world where the values of land are raising are rising quickly. And we work within what appraisals, you know, dictate the land to be valued at. That's the the rules of the road for nonprofits. Uh, so by uh the circumstances we're in, we're starting at a higher number. Um, but, you know, we have in terms of overall percentage of the contribution that we're we would be proposing, and yes, we have been bringing it down. The feedback I've been receiving informally is see if you can get some more funds from other places, and we've done that. We've we got, you know, because of the the entrepreneurial spirit from the town administrator in Franklinton got a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the state Great Trails Grant Program. That's going to go about two hundred thousand towards the acquisition, two hundred and fifteen thousand, and the rest of it is going to be available for the improvements to the site. But the twenty percent contribution just for the acquisition uh and then us having a hundred percent of the overall costs covered by by non-county contributions, you all's contribution is going to be about five percent. And that's about on average what what we've gotten with the investments from other local governments we've worked on over the years.
So help me understand how you all work financially. If you're a nonprofit, you have people that donate money to your organization because they want to see your what you say you were going to do. So they give thousands of dollars to your work uh for the Conservancy, is that correct?
We raise the money, yes, that's correct. Um, we've been doing this work for about twenty five years now. I've been with the organization twenty one years. There's twenty one organizations like ours spread across the state. Uh, we all generally work on the same type of projects, uh trying to preserve land. Trying to preserve land, sometimes more focused on farmland, depending on which Conservancy it is. And some that are working more on public open space access, like this project would be. But we raise the money from all sources that we can get it from, the same sources that the county would potentially go after, federal funds.
Do you carry a fund balance?
Beg your pardon?
Do you carry a fund balance?
We have a, a a board of directors and a finance committee of our board of directors that oversees all that, and we have an endowment. We have long-term investment funds. So yes, we have, and we're audited once a year, as you can imagine, with all of the, the funding that we get from the federal and state level and the private foundations, the philanthropists who support the work that we do. Yes, they wanna know that we're.
About how much do you all receive annually?
Well, that depends on the projects we're working on, but, you know, this fiscal year is probably gonna be about two and a half million with all the acquisitions, and we're working on some great projects across eight counties. Lewisburg happens to be our home. But we get to work with many units of government and, and many landowners. It's a very rewarding job.
How, sorry, go ahead.
Commissioner Foye?
I wanted to bring some contracts here. My little store, I got a little store, a pile through this brush, right across the street. A few years ago, we constructed a dog. Just a little piece of land. Money-wise, we put much into that dog park. But he's asking to go for this hundred and forty-three acre park.
Hundred and thirty-four, yes, sir.
Hundred and forty-three acres. Same cost for fifth of an acre dog. And I voted for the dog.
And I, I ask you to, I, I do ask you to judge this on its merits, not necessarily in comparison to others.
I'm just saying, the money-wise, we're looking about the same contribution to this versus the dog.
And I don't have, cause I don't have it in front of me here from when we, we took the walk and
Yes, sir.
took the tour of it. Help me out without sharing business that you can't share, but as far as where's the, the family, the Edwards family, are they, they discounted the, the property? Like, obviously, they wanna see it in the Conservancy. You've got a lot of donors coming out. You've got the county now potentially coming out. The, the family themselves, what have, what have they offered in this? To, to keep this, you know, kinda legacy going for them?
They've agreed to sell it at significantly less than the county's assessed level.
Yeah.
How many acres is it?
It's listed as a hundred and thirty-four acres. Yeah. And we do have a long-term agreement. I, I have to be careful what I say regarding representing things for the family, cause I have the
I understand, that's why I was careful with my question.
patriarch of the family here in the audience tonight.
Are these trails, are they handicapped, accessible?
No, sir. They would be, you know, like a traditional state park walking trail type of thing where, you know, it's gonna be in the woods. The good news is the majority of what we hope to be the trails is already there from old farm trails. It's been a very well-maintained property over the many, many years, and it's going to live itself very well to the public being able to enjoy it. But it, it will require walking.
Any other questions that Scott and Nancy have? Motion on the floor.
Vote on it. I would, I think the motion doesn't include a review by the county attorney or authority to sign. So we'd at least like to have the opportunity to discuss the terms and go over the terms, and if you guys are inclined to approve this. Or possibly even bring back the final terms to the board for review.
I think it'd also be helpful to see the, the financials as well, maybe in the last audit or two. Just to be sure that things are as we feel they should be, and just not that I'd question it, but it's just a good thing to say that we checked the box and that we know you're solid and we know this is acceptable, and all things are decent above board, so.
I agree.
I'll, I'll amend the motion made by Roxanne to include the attorney's recommendation and the two years of financials.
We need to have a second before we amend.
A second, amend.
I want to play around the amendment through the motion.
Aye.
Close motion here. But man, we have a motion on the floor, an amended motion on the floor. Do we have a second for that? Do we need a second for that as well?
Yeah, we never got a second on the original motion.
Second on that?
I second the motion as amended.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion here. Is that concluded publicly?
It sure does. Was that long enough?
Scott, do you have anything to say?
No, sir, not at the time.
One moment. That brings us to House Number Six, closed session. Board is asked to enter into closed session to still follow and open the line of general station. Open the line of D N C G S one twenty-three, that's three forty-eight, dot one one eight three, turn to fly, freedom communication.
Move to go into closed session, Mr. Kim.
Second.
A motion, one second. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion here. Motion here.